Well, hello free people of the Rocky Mountain region and welcome to this Free State Colorado interview. Today I'm joined by Sherri Pye, a must read journalist whose work appears at CompleteColorado.com, a website that posts daily articles and links to important news across Colorado. Well Sherri, I hope you are well and thank you for joining me today.
Hey, as always, thank you as well, Brandon, you too. I'm doing great. Thank you.
Well Sherri, right now there's a controversial project being put forward by the Greeley City Council to build a water park, hotel, and a new ice rink on the westernmost edge of town. This project is dubbed Cascadia and is one of the largest investments that a Colorado city has embarked on and faces widespread opposition from a large portion of the Greeley community. So Sherri, can we start with the broader picture? What can you tell us about this Cascadia project?
Yeah, you know, so I want to back up just a little bit and make sure that people understand there's two different phases to what's going on. And I want to take them separately because the biggest issue with Cascadia, I mean, do not get me wrong, Martin Lind, who is the mastermind behind Cascadia, has done amazing things for Greeley. He's done amazing things for Fort Collins Loveland and Windsor where his hometown is. And Martin has never really done a development that hasn't been accepted and happy and whatever. And Cascadia, the project itself is a great idea. I mean, who doesn't love the Colorado Eagles? Greeley has always been the wicked stepchild to Fort Collins and this would kind of move them forward. The project itself is not, to me, what is in question. What is in question is the abuse by the Greeley City Council and how this thing is getting funded. Now, we can sit and debate all day whether or not Cascadia is right or wrong. I really haven't taken a stance on Cascadia itself because I haven't seen the numbers. I haven't seen the figures. I don't know what kind of revenue it's going to bring. Like I said, I know Martin very well. I've known him for two decades. He's never done anything that has been not great that I'm aware of when it comes to developments, but I haven't seen the whole proposal for Cascadia. So I really have stayed out of it. Where the problem, the first problem, the biggest red bell, the biggest red flag, the biggest bell that everybody should be looking at, and the concern is this $115 million that the city of Greeley has recently approved in pre-development expenses, which yes, the Cascadia project, which I think they're now calling Catalyst or whatever, the Catalyst project, because it's the Cascadia area, the Catalyst project is estimated between 800 million and 1.1 billion. Pre-development costs are always about 10%, so that would put 115 million right about the right area. And nine times out of 10 cities and counties and municipalities do fund this initial part of it, not debating that project. But Greeley has its toes in about 100 things right now. They want to, they just recently upped the food tax and made it permanent on the backs of all of the citizens of Greeley that can't afford it. So everybody who is asking for rebates on their food tax every year is now going to be paying for money to redo 35th Avenue, 47th Avenue, 65th Avenue, 8th Avenue, all of the highway projects that need to be done that they have now decided to take out of the food tax dollars instead of the initial pot of money that it was supposed to come from, which was the quality of life taxes that were passed again a few years ago, which I supported. In addition to, you know, 60 million at 35th Avenue and 60 million at 47th Avenue and 60 million at 65th Avenue and probably by now 125 million at 8th Avenue, that Greeley is going to have to pay for those improvements because CDOT won't. CDOT was supposed to partner with them. They've backed out. We all know how that works. In addition to that, they want to partner with Weld County on the Weld County Airport and put tens of millions of dollars into the Weld County Airport to expand that so that it can start getting commercial flights and become a regional airport. In addition to that, money is still owed to the city of Greeley on the Downtown Hotel and Convention Center in which a bunch of wealthy men borrowed $8 million from the city of Greeley without asking the voters and the city of Greeley approved that to build the down. Okay, keep this in mind for future thought, Downtown Hotel and Convention Center. The Downtown Hotel, we are owed money on that. In addition to that, they've got, you know, all of these other projects that are going on. And I just lost my train of thought, but there was something else that they wanted to get involved in. They have got their toes in everything. Oh, it's the Weld County, the new Weld County Courthouse. They're working with the county to help build a new Weld County Courthouse and that's going to require land swapping deals. Greeley has got their toes in so much money right, in so many things right now with little to no money that to go in and want to spend another 115 million dollars on pre-development fees with the use of something called certificates of participation is the most irresponsible mismanagement of funds that I think I've ever seen. And not only, and this is no surprise to anybody who knows me, myself and Complete Colorado and the Independence Institute have been fighting back against what we call COPs, the OPs. We've been fighting back against those for decades because what they are is they're end around Tabor. Taxpayers Bill of Rights says that you cannot go into debt, nor can you go into any long-term leases, nor can you raise taxes without going to the taxpayer. So shortly after Tabor became a thing in the 90s, these certificates of participation became the way that cities and counties can abuse Tabor. Because a certificate of participation does not require the vote of the public. What it requires is a series of year-long leases, mini leases. And remember I said you can't go into long-term leases under Tabor? You can lease up to a year. So a certificate of participation allows long-term one-year leases that basically run around Tabor. So example is the city center phase one. The big city hall that the council meetings are held in right now, that was financed using COPs against everybody's better judgment. There was pushback by the community. There was pushback by everybody. City Council did it anyway. Couple of people that are on this current board were on that board, Dale Hall and John Gates. I don't remember if Brett Payton was on that board at that time, but I know Hall and Gates were on the board that approved those COPs. So what happens is you go to XYZ investment firm and you say, hey, we want to build a $45 million building, but we don't want to go to the taxpayers to ask for it because we've already heard that they don't like it. Can you please build the building for us? And then lease it back to us for the next 30 years? And every year for 30 years, we'll agree to lease that building from you. And at the end of the 30 years, you can turn the deed of the property over to us. So Brandon, does that sound to you like a long-term lease? Does it sound to you like they're building capital improvements without asking the voters? They have found a way around Tabor. The problem with those one-year leases is at any given time during those 30 years, if you get a board in there that all of a sudden decides, I don't like this, or if the bottom falls out and the economy is not there and the money is not there to pay for it, and they decide not to sign that lease again, the company that holds the deed on that property can kick you out and say, okay, you didn't pay your lease. We're not getting money from you. We now own the building. So it's basically no different than a mortgage because somebody can kick you out and evict you. You don't get the deed to the property until 30 years later when it's paid off or however long you agree on it. So you have just gone around Tabor by disguising a mortgage and debt for 30 short-term leases. So fast forward and I'll stop here in a second and I apologize. It's kind of like I'm trying to give the 30,000 foot view and then you can ask me whatever question. But fast forward to Catalyst. So now the city needs 115 million dollars to do all the pre-development costs that we've already agreed normally is done by a city. Don't disagree with that. However, Greeley doesn't have 115 million dollars. So why don't they have 115 million dollars? Well, they have a COP out on the city center phase one. They have a COP out on the most recent fire station. And those are the two that I can come up with off the top of my head. Who knows how many others they have out that I'm not aware of? But they don't have 115 million dollars to do it. So they have two choices. They can go to the voter and say, we need 115 million dollars to do this project. And what do you think the voter is going to say? What have you seen? You've covered this. What have you seen from the people in Greeley? Do they want Catalyst?
You know Sherri, I was at the city council meeting a little while back here where the project was being discussed and oh my gosh, the turnout was amazing. It was probably one of the biggest turnouts I've ever seen at any city council meeting, even bigger than most legislative committee hearings, you know, for the whole state. And they had to have the overflow room. They had so many people there and it was easily, easily two to one, three to one against it because so much of Greeley has been neglected. You know, the east side, kind of the southeast side more where I live has definitely been neglected from our infrastructure. You know, there's huge flooding issues and drainage issues down in the downtown area. Of course, Lincoln Park has been promised to be cleaned up quite a bit. And there's so many other projects that the city is planning on working on. And the people of Greeley who are just working hard to pay their bills see these big, big projects, you know, on the westernmost side where most people in Greeley are not going to either be able to afford these, to go to these water park and ice rink, you know, the stadium. Or, you know, it's so far for them or maybe they, you know, in their own community, but they're still having to pay for it and they're still on the hook for it. So yeah, Sherri, I can tell you, most people were very vocally opposed to it. And it was really interesting to see that much community outcry and how many people showing up because you don't see that very often, that's for sure.
Exactly. And that's, and so that's the point with where I was going. So 115 million dollars, let's go to the voter who has already cried foul on this project and said, no, we don't want this. We want you to clean up east Greeley. We want you to focus on downtown. We want our highways made safer. They've already said no. So guess what the voters are going to say to 115 million dollar bond? They're going to say no. They don't want any higher taxes to pay for this project. So what did they do? Well, that leads to part B where I say this is the most egregious use of a certificate of participation ever witnessed. COPs are designed for capital expenditures, building a new city center, building a new fire station, building a new ice house, whatever it is. They're designed for capital projects. What they're using this money for is not a capital project. What they're using this money for is all of the pre-development stuff that we talked about. The design, the procurement of construction equipment, all the stuff that if this project fails to go through, and keep in mind, that could happen. Anybody who lives in Windsor, all you got to do is ask them about Future Legends and they know all about how a project can fail. Okay? So I'm not saying this project would fail, but there is still a possibility that it fails. So Greeley puts 115 million dollars into all of this pre-development stuff. There is no tangible product they have that they can then sell. You can't get your money back from an architect. You can't get your money back from a structural engineer. You can't get your money back. You can sell your construction equipment, but you're never going to sell it for what you paid for it. You cannot recoup that money. That's why COPs are for capital expenditures because property appreciates. It doesn't depreciate, right? So how are they getting away with that? How is the Greeley City Council being able to use COPs to finance non-capital improvements? Well, they're mortgaging, and I don't care if anybody wants to take me up on the true definition of that, but they're mortgaging 46 city-owned buildings that they're putting up to this company that they've hired. That company, and I can't remember the name of it off the top of my head, but there's a company that is going to hold the deed and titles on 46 Greeley properties until 115 million dollars is paid back. Now, some of those properties worth mentioning, the police station, three fire departments, three fire stations, the Funplex, the Guadalupe Shelter, the Ice House Downtown, the City Center North. They are mortgaging properties that are our prime properties. And our police station and three fire stations. Anybody who wants a police department and fire safety probably ought to get a red flag right there. You know what I'm saying? So this company is going to hold these deeds and these titles until Greeley pays back that 115 million dollars. Then they'll give them the right to their deeds back. What happens if the project falls through? Who pays the 115 million dollars on those COPs? You, the taxpayer. You're going to watch your property values dump because your taxes on everything are going to have to go up. They're going to have to raise your water rates. They're going to have to raise something. I'm guessing what they'd raise because we still have Tabor, okay? Here's the problem. We still have Tabor. You are still going to, let's pretend worst case scenario. They spend 80 million of the 115 because they're saying it's up to 115, that they won't spend it all at one time, that they'll spend it as they need it. So let's say they spend 50 million dollars, okay? 50 million dollars is the cost of another small fire station or whatever. Let's say they spend 50 million dollars and the project falls through. Well, in order to get the 50 million dollars back on one of those properties, in order to pay off those properties and get those deeds back, they're going to have to go to the voter and ask the voter to raise their taxes. And what do you think the voter is going to say when the city comes out and says, if you don't give us this tax raise, we're going to shut down, we're going to have to shut down the police station? Or we're going to have to shut down the fire station? Or we're going to have to take away the ice house? Hey guys, we don't get our big ice house out in West Greeley, but now we're going to have to shut down the one in downtown Greeley as well. They have, this is such an abuse of power. It's unbelievable. And I'm going to be point blank honest. The fact that I have to publicly agree with Tommy Butler and Deb DeBoody on something, just you might have a little stick and knife in my heart. And I know they're not crying over me saying that. But it is really sad when we have a 5-2 conservative majority board in Greeley and that resolution passed 5-2. And the only two people with common sense on that board was Tommy Butler and Deb DeBoody. And that's, I have never in my life, I have been writing about certificates of participation and I have been watching school districts and municipalities. The Loveland City Council used COPs to pay for their municipal broadband, 145 million dollars. The voters were outraged. Greeley was going to, Greeley wanted to, former city manager Roy Otto tried. Thankfully, myself and a couple of others were able to squash that idea. But here we are again. Here we are again. And only this time, we have no tangible item to show for it. And if the project falls through, we're going to lose the tangible items that we already own free and clear.
Wow. Yeah, absolutely, absolutely irresponsible by the city council. And it goes to show you people, just because there's a Republican majority on your city council or your local level of government doesn't necessarily mean they're advocates for taxpayers or that they're voting with common sense either. And it is outrageous. It's totally outrageous that they're putting the taxpayers on the hook. And we've seen this in other municipalities across Colorado where, you know, it just so happens that where all the shortages are, you know, sure, they can fund all of their little special projects with the arts and their, you know, giving their friends the money here and there and in a lot of other cities. But of course, it's always just so happens to be that police and fire are the ones that are underfunded. None of their other programs are. And I have to think it's because they know the voters are going to approve any type of tax increase for police and fire, of course, or education, right? So, you know, there's some good accounting there, not good, I would say, but some tricky accounting where people can say, hey, listen, you know, yeah, we got plenty of money for all these other things that maybe the voters wouldn't support a tax increase for, but you know, the things that we really want. So I mean, it's totally irresponsible. It's not the proper role of government. This is not what they would be doing. And yeah, I mean, this is, it's a bad idea overall. And what do you think the genesis is of this though? I mean, why do you think, like you said, I know Martin Lind's a smart guy, very successful person, has accomplished quite a bit, but why are these five city council members so enamored with this project? What do you think it is? I mean, I've watched a lot of the city council meetings, been down there. What do you think it is that's really drawing them to it? That they're willing to put the entire city on the line for this one project? What do you think?
You know, there is no doubt that the return on investment, if this goes through, would be huge for the city of Greeley. I am not going to pretend that that is not the case because it would be. The Colorado Eagles are the darling of minor league hockey in Colorado. You know, they have people, they've sold out seasons as long as they've been in fruition. I was with the Greeley Tribune and actually the Windsor Now, when Martin devised the Colorado Eagles on a napkin in a bar, sitting around with a couple of guys. And it was a brilliant plan, you know? He and the two other guys that he developed that team with, it was brilliant. And it's turned out to be an amazing draw for Northern Colorado. There is no doubt that the return on investment would be amazing for the city of Greeley. But it goes back to what happens. The return on investment may be amazing for Greeley, but what happens to, I'm going to go back to what I said earlier. Remember when I said Downtown Hotel and Convention Center? When that was built and that money, that 8 million dollars was loaned to the investors on that downtown property to build that, I said back then, mark my words, there is going to come a day where something's going to move into Greeley and it's going to directly compete with that Hotel and Convention Center. Excuse me. It's going to directly compete with that Hotel and Convention Center and you're going to have a problem because whatever it is that's competing with your own property is going to cause that property to fall out and the money that is owed to you is not going to come to fruition. And we're going to be out, however many millions of dollars, whatever it is. Well, here we are. We're here. Now we have a convention center that's going in on the west side of town, which if you live in Broomfield, Fort Collins, Loveland, Brighton, Erie, Longmont, and you want to make a weekend of it, and so you're going to take the family on a weekend vacation up to Northern Colorado and you're going to catch an Eagles game and the next day go to a water park and, you know, go do some shopping in this great facility. Where are you going to stay to do that? Are you going to drive to downtown Greeley to stay and then drive back and forth? Because we're talking 8th Avenue to about 180th Avenue. So we're talking 150, 160 city blocks. So 15, 20 miles from one place to the other, right through the dead center of town where we have horrible intersections? No, you're not going to stay downtown. You're going to stay at the convention center where all of this stuff is located. If you live in Greeley, are you going to stay anywhere for that weekend? No. City of Greeley people aren't going to be the ones to go out and stay in that facility because they live 10 miles from it. You know what I mean? Are there going to be conventions? Absolutely. But what happens to the people that were putting their conventions in downtown? At the Downtown Hotel and Convention Center? So the return of investment is the pie in the sky. Like I said earlier, Greeley has always been the wicked stepchild to Fort Collins. Back when Anheuser-Busch came in, that was initially supposed to go on US 85 north of Greeley. Some plans fell through. People wouldn't sell land. Land couldn't be blighted the right way. And Anheuser-Busch ended up going on I-25 north of Fort Collins. So what do you think Anheuser-Busch locating north of Fort Collins on I-25 did? That's why we are the wicked stepchildren. Because now Anheuser-Busch solely, almost solely, is what created the I-25 corridor that Greeley now doesn't have. So I believe the catalyst behind this is the return of investment, the idea that we are finally going to make the map, the idea that we're finally going to have all of this windfall of sales taxes to improve downtown because that's what they'll use it for. But the problem is you're going to improve something that nobody's going to use. And it just, it's just phenomenal to me that the city council is pitting one side of town against the other. We're literally segregating our own community. You have an ice house downtown, then who do you think is going to use it when Catalyst goes in? It's not going to be the people on the west side of town, the people that currently use it. Because the people on the west side of town are the people that can afford to put their kids into hockey and can afford to put their kids into other skating activities. So they go downtown and use the ice house. Well, when that becomes irrelevant because we don't have to drive all the way downtown now, we can just drive out to 180th Avenue or whatever that is out there. We're going to go out there. So you're going to kill the ice house one way or another. You're going to kill the water park at the Funplex. Because who's going to, who's going to use the Funplex water park when we've got this big fancy new one five miles further up the road? You're killing yourself with this project. And you're about to, you know, when you were talking about the pushback on the development, something came to mind and I was thinking, let's say they spend 50 million dollars of the 115 and the project falls through. And because there are still problems with acquiring land on the project, let's make that perfectly clear. And you know that as well. There's a section of land that Martin Lind has to acquire that is currently a recycling facility that was owned by longtime Greeley residents, the Anderson family. Everybody knows that. The people that have that are not selling the property. Greeley is going to have to find a way to blight it, which that's going to be another fight. So there's still land that needs to be acquired to make this project go through. So let's say you spend 50 million of the 115, the project falls through and the company comes to you and says, okay, which buildings do you want us to hang on to in order to get the taxpayers to pony up the 50 million that you owe us? How about we hang on to, oh, I don't know, the little building that's on the corner of, you know, all these little outlying buildings that nobody even knows about? Let's hold on to those. Maybe if you go to the city taxpayer and you say, we need 50 million dollars to get this money back because we have to pay off the bus garage. What do you think the city taxpayer is going to say? Not my problem. I don't ride the bus. Okay, well, let's, you hold on to the City Center North so we can get the money back. The taxpayer is going to go, I don't care about City Center North. I don't use the planning department. I don't, I mail in my taxes or my fees. I pay them online. I don't go down to that building ever. I don't, I could care less. Let it fall apart. You figure out what to do with it. No, that's not the buildings that the city council is going to choose to hold back. They're going to hold back the police station and the fire stations because that's where everybody's heartstrings are at and that's where we're going to vote to give them the money. And everybody, you know, I say this on every single time I come on your podcast and I'm going to say it again because I'm already getting hit on social media about it. You live in Wyoming. Why do you care? Go away. I still have all my family in Greeley. I still pay taxes in Greeley. I still have a job in Colorado that I pay taxes on and I still pay rent on a property in Greeley. So I'm not going away, you know? I can probably pull up several city council members' tracer reports and find where they've been or not, you know, their city finance reports and find where they've been. Their campaigns have been supported by out of state money. So I, you know, Greeley City, Greeley School Board member Brenda, I can't think of her last name off the top of my head, all of her school board money came from California. So don't, I don't want to hear a Wyoming argument. That being said, Greeley folks really need to really investigate this. I've heard from a couple of my friends who are like, I can't believe you're against it. I can't believe you're against it. You guys, I'm not against it in theory. I'm a fiscal conservative. And let's go back to the one person that said, I can't believe you're against this. This is great for Greeley. So now you're calling yourself a demon, a demoncrat. No, that's really funny because not only are Democrats carrying the petitions to recall the, which is another topic that I'm sure you want to talk about. Not only are Democrats carrying petitions to repeal this ordinance, but you're a libertarian and I'm sure you're carrying a petition. And there's Republicans carrying petitions. And I posted a poll on the Weld County Republican page asking people what they feel about this. There's over 100 votes and not one of them is a yes. Not one. This is not a Democrat issue. This is a bipartisan issue. And maybe I'm wrong. I'm sorry if I assumed you're carrying a petition. But this is truly a bipartisan situation. You've got Democrats, libertarians, and Republicans all saying, what is wrong with you?
No, no, agreed. And I was just at the Weld County or the Greeley Parade, you know, for 4th of July. And yeah, there were several Republicans. And yeah, there were several Republicans marching along with, in the Republican section of the parade there who were carrying the petitions to, to get this on the ballot. So can you tell us a little bit about that? What do you know about this petition that citizen activists are trying to do? What is, what would this do?
I don't know a whole lot, but what I do know is it's my understanding that they have until August 6th to gather so many signatures. I don't know what those numbers are. I haven't looked into that. I'm not sure what that is. But it's my understanding they have until August 6th to carry, to gather these signatures. The way I understand the way ordinances or petitions go for Greeley in the past is if they get the, the valid signatures from Greeley voters, and let's make it clear. If somebody comes up to the, comes up to somebody and says, sign my petition, please know you have to be a registered voter in the city of Greeley, not in Weld County, but in the city of Greeley. So not Garden City, not Evans, Greeley only. If they get the number of signatures that they need to put it on the ballot, then it goes back to city council. City council then has the choice whether to just pull back and say, okay, we're not going to do it. We'll repeal it ourselves or move forward and put it on the ballot. I can give you an example of the Terry Ranch Water Project, which I was fully in support of. That was a situation where the city of Greeley council members decided to move forward and purchase that. And residents were upset. They went and gathered signatures. They got a petition to repeal that. That made it on the ballot and it lost. When it got to the ballot, it lost and the city was able to move forward and buy Terry Ranch Water Project. Something tells me that this will make the ballot and I don't think it'll pass this time. I think this particular project, there are Republicans and libertarians that are agreeing with the Democrats on this. I don't know why the Democrats don't want it. Usually their tax is spent to death, but I'm not going to argue their position. But libertarians and Republicans don't want this and correct me if I'm wrong on the libertarian side, but we're all fiscal, we're all fiscally conservative and this is not a fiscally conservative move.
100%. No, completely agree with you. Yeah, the liberty community or libertarians, Republicans that aren't on city council at least. Yeah, definitely be opposed to this. And, you know, it doesn't really make sense for the city to be involved in this project, if you ask me at all. It's not the proper role of government, but of course, like you outlined earlier, the entire way they're going about it and taking on the debt and trying to circumvent our taxpayers' bill of rights. Totally irresponsible, totally doing it the wrong way and putting so much risk on Greeley taxpayers that should be concerning to everybody. Like you said, nonpartisan issue. And just what to bring up, one last thing too, that came up at the city council meeting about this project was that where they're building this is that westernmost side of Greeley on Highway 34 there. It's actually closer to downtown Windsor, closer to downtown Loveland and closer to downtown Johnstown than it is to downtown Greeley. So, you know, like you said, if people are coming up here for an event, maybe a concert or a hockey game or something like that, where are they going to go? Well, most likely they're going to end up over in one of those communities, spending their money and bringing in the sales tax revenue there. They're not going to drive further away from I-25 down Highway 34, even further east away from potentially where they're from, just to spend some money in our downtown area in Greeley, unfortunately. But that's just the reality of the geography of the situation. So it really doesn't make a ton of sense that way in terms of who, who's really going to benefit the most from this. And then of course we have, you know, the Blue Federal Credit Union or the, used to be called the Budweiser Arena right there with the, the convention center they have, the big stadium they have. I mean, you have now very close to each other, two stadiums, two places where conferences were. I was just at a, a little conference there last, a couple of weeks ago now at the, by the Blue Federal Credit Union area. There's trade shows there. There's things that happen there. So now you're going to try and pull people even further east. I don't know. Doesn't seem like it's going to make a ton of sense and there's so many questions surrounding this. And one of the most glaring things, just to, to wrap up with my comments here is that the city council members even had a hard time explaining this. You know, at those city council meetings, you know, these council members were trying to explain how the financing works. And it was clear that they don't really understand it because it is so convoluted and so strange. And they, they didn't know. They, they were asking questions of the, of the city manager and the city staff to try and get a better understanding. But they're voting for it and they don't really understand how the financial mechanisms are behind it. So unfortunately, folks, that's a reality of our government. That's how it works at the city council, the state legislature and probably even in Congress where these people vote for things they don't necessarily understand. But somebody somewhere along the line said, yeah, you should vote for it. It's a good idea. So what else, Sherry, to wrap it up here, what else do people need to know? What are some of the important things that people should take away from this?
You know, to, to, yeah, to quickly to, to piggyback on that, you know, when Melissa McDonald, city councilwoman, Melissa McDonald was running for office, I point blank asked her at one of the forums, at one of the debates, would you ever vote yes on certificates of participation? Her exact, I mean, I explained to her what they were. Her exact answer, her first answer was she didn't know what they were. She couldn't tell me what they were. She couldn't tell me how the finance mechanism worked. So then when I gave her the 30,000 foot view of how they worked, she said, oh, no. I mean, I would never go around the taxpayers when it comes to, to voting for raising your taxes. But Melissa McDonald was one of the yeses. So I just wanted to throw that in. Really good point about the, the restaurants. I'm trying to play through my brain. I think the closest restaurant to this facility is about 71st Avenue in, in that Mexican food restaurant that sits there and, and every, all the fast food that's around it. So you're talking five to 10 miles. Yes, that's going to be an issue. And I'm not surprised to hear that, that nobody else understands it. You know, so, because we have to, I have to have this conversation with these people every single time this comes up. Now, this conversation was not had with these people before they voted because I, in my wildest imaginations, never imagined that they were going to use COPs to finance pre-development money ever, you know? And so call me bad. I mean, that is part, bad part of me being in Wyoming, but just unbelievable. But now I'll do everything I can to help get it on the ballot and get it, you know, get the repeal passed. But what should people know? I mean, literally, if you don't, if you still don't understand, reach out to me. You can ask me any question you want. I'm on Facebook. I'm an open book. You can find me, ask me whatever question you need to know and I'll explain it. But understand that I think the two big takeaways are, first of all, COPs are an end around Tabor. And the, the way they're using the COP is an end around COPs. I mean, they're literally putting your fire stations and your police station at risk by doing this if this project does not go through. If this ends up happening, Brandon, and, and the repeal loses and they go through with it, I hope and pray for the sake of taxpayers in Greeley, Colorado, that, that, that the project goes through. That's the only thing we can do at that point. Because we, otherwise we stand to lose $115 million worth of city facilities. And that will turn Greeley, you think we're a wicked stepsister now to Fort Collins? That will turn us into the biggest veteran community that you've ever seen. And I just, and I would say, you know, I don't know if you know who they could contact to sign the petition or if you know of any places where it's online where they can find where there's going to, because I know one, one of the Republicans that's carrying a petition, she's been at several places and I think she's going to be at the Farr Library tonight or tomorrow night. I can't remember, but find somebody, reach out, go to the Weld County GOP forum page on Facebook because they're posting there constantly about where places are. Find a way to sign that petition and get it on the ballot and give people back the voice that the council ignored when they went to the meetings and tried to tell them, don't do this.
Yeah, well said, Sherry. And people can reach out to me. I have my contact information at FreeStateColorado.com and definitely can help connect people there. But really appreciate your time. Thank you for going into detail about, about this horrible project and really giving people the information they need to know. So appreciate you, Sherry. Look forward to talking to you again soon.
You as well. Thanks, Brandon.
All right, take care.